Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corbin? Sorry, I don't have my seat with me.
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Braboni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thanks, Megan. First item on the agenda is a special proclamation.
The proclamation this evening is regarding National Community Planning Month, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse this as an opportunity to highlight the contributions of sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas this celebration gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning Commission and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Renton, and whereas the city of Renton has, for a fourth consecutive year, been awarded the Governor's Smart Communities Award, recognizing the hard work and innovation of public and private partners, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional community planners of the city of Renton, Washington, and extend our heartfelt thanks to the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. And now, therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2015 to be National Community Planning Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance.
Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 26th day of October 2015.
You paused, so I thought you were done. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we adopt the proclamation as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this proclamation be adopted as read, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. And representing all of the great planners from all over, including our Planning Commission, is Jennifer Henning.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. National Community Planning Month gives us an opportunity to reflect on the great work that's being accomplished in cities and counties all across the country, and the involvement of our citizens through public outreach. It also allows us to recognize the people who dedicate their efforts to planning in the city of Renton. This includes our volunteer planning commissioners and the staff within community services, within public works, and within community and economic development, particularly our current planners, our long-range planners, and our economic development staff. And if I could, I'd like to have the staff who are present tonight, who are in our, who are working as planners for the city, please stand up and be recognized.
So Clay, we've got to wake you up in the back so you can get him on camera. There, he's right with us.
Thank you.
It's great.
These folks and many others help to make great communities happen, especially in Renton, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. We also have a planning commissioner here.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do, and I haven't actually met you yet.
Well, this is a very nice time to...
This is our new commissioner, Charles Soll.
On camera.
So...
So please would you stand up?
Chuck Seal, you've got to stand up.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, next on the agenda is a special presentation for one of our police officers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council President Prince, members of the council, and good evening, audience. In 2014, Officer Robbie Elinen was recognized for the department's Medal of Valor and Life-saving Medal for his heroic actions at the fire up on Eagle Ridge. As a result of that, he was nominated by the VFW to become for the State Police Officer of the Year. And so, he, this last spring in Spokane, received that award. So, to give him his award this afternoon is Judy Liu. She is the president of Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary 9474 in Custer. She wanted us to describe that that's about three inches from the Canadian border on Interstate Five. She is a Vietnam veteran and a retired first sergeant after spending 23 years in the United States Army. She's a retired business owner and continues to support the city of Renton by volunteering on a regular basis with both the police department and the historical museum. So, I'd ask that Judy Liu and Officer Robbie Elinen come forward.
Thanks, Chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And thank you for the opportunity to present this. Officer Elinen has family up in Linden, which is about that far from Custer, and his hours have changed, so he has not been able to make it so that we can present him with his award. The Veterans of Foreign Wars and its auxiliary do have a program for law enforcement officers of the year, and up in Blaine and Burndale and Bellingham, the officers and the police departments don't want to talk to us so much. So, I said, let's nominate a Renton cop, since I'm here. He was considered with 76 other officers around the state of Washington, so this really is quite an honor. But we at Custer really appreciate and would like to present Rob with this award. Thank you for all of your hard work. And Rob is also a Navy veteran, in case you guys didn't know, and Veterans Day is coming up, and I'm sure we have a couple of veterans in the audience here, so happy Veterans Day to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to award this.
Thank you, Judy. And congratulations, Rob. If you want, if you have your 30-minute speech, you're welcome to do something.
No 30-minute speech. I'm very humbled and gracious to accept this. It's an honor to be recognized by such an outstanding group. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing her some time.
That's great. Thanks, Rob. Congratulations. Okay, now we're going to move on to a public hearing. Jamie, let's see if you can beat that.
I'm sure not. My name is Jamie Thomas. I'm the Fiscal Services Director for our Administrative Services Department, and I'm going to discuss the mid-biennial budget overview, adjustment overview, with you tonight. Beginning in 2011, '12, as most of you know, we started our first mid-biennial budget, and with that, the state law requires that every year within that biennium, we have a biennium review and adjustment associated with it. So that's what we're here for tonight, and there are a few primary cornerstones that we're going to really cover in the mid-biennial budget adjustment, and that's one to update the general fund revenue projections with the changed conditions since the last time we adopted the 2014, or 2015-16 budget. We're going to make some housekeeping adjustments to incorporate prior council actions that have taken place throughout the year, and proposed service changes to reflect business activity and council priorities since last time we passed the budget. And then, the outcomes and the actions that we're going to ask the council to take at the end of this is to set, actually, the property tax levy ordinances for 2016, which actually happens to be three ordinances, adopt the actual mid-biennial budget adjustment, which is its own separate ordinance, and then we have a couple of interfund loans that we're going to be asking for, for capital improvements, and that will actually require a resolution. So that was page two. Page three is an overview of the property tax. So, the state allows that cities increase the property tax rate by up to 1% or inflation each year, whichever is less. So normally, in the past, we've always increased the property tax rate by 1%. In September of this year, the annual inflation was actually only 0.25%. So, in this case, we would only be allowed to levy the 0.25%, but the state law also requires a provision for large cities to take the full 1% if we can establish a substantial need. And in our case, taking 0.25% would result in a $90,000 increase in the property tax levy for 2016 versus $357,000 if we levied the full 1% for 2016. And based on the city's current and projected needs in 2016 and beyond, the staff is recommending that the council actually declares a substantial need so we can levy the full 1% for 2016. So since the property tax levy sometimes can be a little difficult to follow the calculation, this is just a quick calculation of how we land on what the actual levy amount is for the future year. So, we start with the 2015 base levy, which doesn't include any new construction or any of the re-levis from prior year refunds, and then we add the 1% onto that 2015 base levy, and that establishes our 2016 base levy. Then, with that base levy, we can add the new construction, the annexations. There is a correction in 2013, and there will be a final installment of that correction in 2016, and then the real levy of prior year refunds to establish our total 2016 tax levy. And as you can see, that when you compare the actual 2015 tax levy with the actual 2016 tax levy, we're not even at 1%, it's about 0.72% over the 2015 actual levy. Then, that actually, in the long run, ends in a decrease in the tax rate per 1,000 assessed valuation. We're looking, if we take the 1% increase, the property tax rate would go from $2.83, $2.83 per 1,000 AV to 283 to 276 per 1,000 assessed valuation. That takes us to sales tax, which is our next largest contributor to our general fund revenues. And in 2015, we're looking at seven, with what we have through September, we're looking to end the year with about 7.5% more than 2014, which is about 4% above the budget. Of this increase, the construction sector grew by 27%, which has really been fueled by both strong commercial and residential growth. And we, with some large projects, we expect this growth to continue into 2016, but we do expect that the construction sector will start to slow down a little bit into 2017 and beyond. Then, the next large contributors to the sales tax growth is auto sales and the service sector, which both increased by 10% each. And then, we have the general retail and wholesale, which grew 6% combined. With auto sales, the service sector, and the general retail wholesale sector, that represents the 78% of the total retail sales tax that the city collects, and with those three sectors together, that makes up 83% of the total year-over-year growth, so compared to 2014. And we, since those contribute the largest piece of the overall sales tax, we expect that sales tax in total is probably going to be more constant, more closer to 4%, especially in light of personal income not growing any more quickly than the rest of the economy, that the growth will remain more stable at 4%. So currently, utility taxes are actually underperforming both our original budget by 3%, and they're also lagging behind the prior, in prior year as well. And so, we're suggesting that we decrease the utility tax revenue in both 2015 and 2016. Historically, our utility taxes have been a more stable growth that we've been able to plan, more consistent growth year to year, but there's been some changes in the last couple of years that have really contributed to the decrease in utility taxes. Primarily, the decrease in, there's been a large decrease in electric and natural gas utilities, and that's related to, one, we've had milder winter temperatures over the last couple of years, and then also, electric rates have actually been decreasing, so those two combined have really reduced the city's portion of the utility tax. Then, the other side of it is the land-lined telephones obviously have continued to decrease as residential users have been slowly transitioning to cellphone-only. And then, fourth, perhaps, one of the, another large impact is the cellular data and the Internet Tax Freedom Act, which does, doesn't allow data, and internet data, to be taxed. And so, the trend that we've been seeing is the providers have been separating the data plans from their cell plans, and where in the past, they used to pay tax on the bundled plans only, or they would pay tax on the full bundled plan, and now they're unbundling those plans and paying tax on the non-data portion only. And this is a trend that's just started, and I think conservatively, we've estimated that all cellphone companies are going to start doing the same thing on a greater level and really starting to pull out the data portion of their revenue. And with all those decreases in utility tax, there has been a partial offset with the city's operated utilities, including water, sewer, and garbage utility taxes have helped offset some of the larger decreases with the other utility taxes. Development fees have been exceeding the budget. We expect that they will exceed the 2015, the current 2015 budget by 20%, and we're exceeding the prior year-to-date amount by 22%. And dollar amount, we're expecting about $825,000 over budget in 2015, and another $480,000 in 2016. Fees, again, are fueled by a couple of large development projects taking place in the city of Renton, and we expect that the project, these, the increased revenue from these projects will continue into 2016. And with this increased level of activity, there's been additional staffing requirement in the, in planning and CED, and there's a proposal, we're asking for a proposal to add four new FTEs and reclass four positions in CED, which should be fully funded with these increased development fees. Real estate excise tax has, is about the same level as it was last year, which is actually 10% above the budget. We expect about $400,000 at the end of the year over budget, and since REITs is restricted for capital use, we would like to increase the budget $400,000 and then move that into for capital-related projects. State shared revenues, over the past three years, have continued to improve and should continue to improve into 2015 and 2016. There's been kind of a, there's been some fluctuation in those state shared revenues, primarily started in 2010, when we first started receiving the state's high-crime distribution for our high-crime rate. And then, in 2013, the liquor excise tax was redirected from the state, was redirected partially, half of 2013, it was redirected away from the cities, and then it was partially restored in 2014, and we're expecting that in 2015, those liquor excise tax revenues will be fully restored again. We also are expecting a minor distribution for the marijuana retail sales taxes and a slight increase in the fuel tax distribution. So the next page is a summary of all of our general fund revenue adjustments that we would like to make. Property tax is just a minor adjustment to reflect the changes in the actual property tax levy that we're, we are proposing. Sales tax, we're making an upward adjustment to reflect the current activity and the anticipated activity into 2016, and that goes the same for the utility tax. Rather, we're decreasing it in 2015 and 2016 to reflect the decreased activity that we expect to bring in from utility tax. The gambling tax, we have a small adjustment that we're looking to make in 2015, and this is related to gambling taxes actually earned in prior years, but we're now actually collecting in 2015. Again, the REITs, we're expecting to receive $400,000 over budget. We would like to recognize the additional $400,000 and then the subsequent transfer to capital improvement fund. We're truing up our state shared revenue, again, mostly attributed to the liquor excise tax and the high-crime sales tax. Then, miscellaneous grants is just truing up four grants that, just to adjust the timing of when we actually receive those grants and the projects that those grants help fund. So there's also corresponding expenditure associated with those grants. Permit fees, we're recognizing the additional permit fee activity, or we would like to eliminate the seizure fund revenue, which, this is just really a reflection of decreased activity over the last couple of years in the seizure funds. There's actually a corresponding expenditure for the exact same amount that you'll see on the summary of expenditures. Interfund, the interfund reimbursement for positions is the portion of, that the utility, the utility funds will be paying to help support three new inspector positions that we are, that we're requesting for in further slides. And then, we also have two new limited, two new limited-term capital improvement position, capital project coordinator positions that we're requesting for in 2016, that the capital improvement funds will be, will be funding, and so the $251,000 reflects the reimbursement from the capital improvement funds. I'm going to move forward one slide to talk about, we're moving into the expenditures for the general fund, just to give a summary of some of the staffing changes that, or a summary of the staffing changes that we're proposing for 2016. So, in this list, there's a total of 18.13 new positions. 4.83 of those positions actually have already been previously approved by the council, and of those, four of them are actually over-hires for the police department and will be funded with salary savings, so there wouldn't be any additional money requesting for those over-hires. Of these positions, 13 of them are reclasses, three which have already been previously approved. Primarily, for the CED positions, $619,000 will be funded with permitting fees and revenue. We also have $375,000 of these positions that will be funded with capital improvement funds. We have, some of the positions which have already been approved will be funded with some of the energy savings that we've seen from the LED light conversion, and then a large portion, about $730,000, will be coming from the general fund, but that really is attributed to the four new police officers and one new city attorney position. So, I'll go back, and this is a summary, then, of all of our general fund expenditures that we're requesting. The first one is the summary of position adjustments, that was, this is just a summary of the total cost from the prior slide. And then, we have several, just truing up certain accounts. We've got the SCORE, ValleyCom accounts to trip what our actual contract costs for 2016 will be. Again, the elimination of seizure fund expenditures, this is the other side of the reduction of the revenue. We've got the RFA communication contract. We've got grant-funded expenses, which is truing up, again, the revenue side, the additional grant revenue on our revenue summary. We are asking to extend the contract arboris for an additional year. We currently have that position, and we just want to extend the contract. We have our compensation for the LED project warranty work, the net, which, the LED project warranty, the Kenny Dale and the truck-mounted arrowboard and the flashing, the school flashing beacons, those are all transportation projects, some miscellaneous transportation projects. We've got our electricity savings from the LED streetlights, which is partially going to fund a half of a position in public works. We're anticipating a small savings in our healthcare insurance premium for 2016, and then a large transfer to capital, the capital improvement fund for property acquisitions. So this slide is a summary of all of, a comparison of the total, of our total revenue requests and our expenditure requests, comparing the original general fund budget and comparing it to our adjustments. So as you can see, overall, most of the one-time revenue and expenditure changes is related to one-time capital transfer-related items. The rest of the ongoing expenditures are supported by ongoing revenues. And in the end, the impact on our fund balance is really minimal, and it helps us, we're still able to maintain the city's goal of a 12% ending fund balance percent relative to our annual general fund operating expenses. This is just another look longer term, the projected impact that the budget adjustment has on our general fund balance. Long-term, the long-term expenditures are supported by ongoing revenues and has a neutral impact on the general fund, fund balance. So that's the general fund. We do have a couple of non-general fund adjustments that we need to, that we need to ask for. And the first one is for our leased facilities fund, which is, which includes the 200 mil building. We would like to increase expenditures to help accommodate the cost for new tenant improvements, which, and commission costs, to help us get another, to sign an extended lease. And in order to do this, we would also like to transfer 187, $875,000 interfund loan to be repaid over by five years. And this interfund loan would come from our reserves in our healthcare, in our healthcare fund. The second piece is our, is an $8.95 million transfer to the municipal capital fund for certain, for previously-approved council property acquisitions as well as other property acquisitions. And the funding for this additional $8.95 million is the surplus of the Sunset Court Park, a transfer of one-time sources from the general fund, and a four-year, $4 million interfund loan from the utility fund. So both of those, both the interfund loan to the leased facilities fund and to the municipal capital fund will require resolutions. So we've combined a resolution for both of the interfund loans into one resolution. And the last non-general fund adjustment is just to align our budget with the 2016 transportation plan, and in that transportation improvement plan, we have the Sunset Lane construction project, which this time we're proposing will be funded by local improvement district. This is a summary of the total adjusted appropriation, so this includes all of our general fund and our non-general fund budget adjustment requests, and just like the prior summarization, we're able, we're able, most of the large changes are one-time in nature, and the ongoing expenditures, once again, are supported with ongoing revenues. So that leaves me with our calendar for the mid-biennial adjustment. We are now on November 2nd, so we have now done, we're doing our public hearing. We are now on November 2nd, so we have now done, we're doing our public hearing, and at this point, the council can take any input from the, from citizens, and we can make, can consider and deliberate any changes that the council would like to make. And we will have another report out to the committee of the whole next Monday night. We're not November 2nd, we're October 26th, I'm sorry. And then, we can have a, we can report back out to the committee of the whole on November 2nd, and our first reading of the ordinances also on November 2nd, and then hopefully a final adoption by November 9th. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, could you go back to slide number 14?
Yes.
Okay. Looking out at years 2019 and 2020, it looks like we're running into some major fund balance deficit there. Is that projection based upon, what is it based upon? I mean, is it based upon, in terms of revenues? Is it based upon projections of what will be in place? We've got a number of different projects going on right now. Is that a real shot picture of what it's going to look like, even including the new revenue that we're anticipating?
Correct. So beginning in the second half of 2018, our sales tax, our annexation sales tax credit will sunset. And so, it, just general revenues are growing more slowly than our expenditures, and with the, with the sunset of that annexation credit, we do expect there to start being a gap between our revenues and expenditures. And there's been action by the council over the last couple of years to help start mitigating that gap, specifically the sales tax annexation credit, and planning with reserves and trying to help us mitigate any, that upside-down between our revenues and expenditures. In 2022, so beyond, we actually will start seeing some savings in our debt service payments. So there's a, there's a four-year window between when we have the sales tax annexation sunset and when we actually start getting some relief from our debt service payments. And so, we, we're trying to help mitigate the, that four-year window. Ewan, is it 2022 that our? So it is 2022 when we start seeing a reduction in our debt service costs.
So I guess another question would be that comes to mind is, would there be some improvement? We've got a number of employees that are going to be retiring, and these are people that are being paid some of the higher wages due to their tenure with the city. And making new hires at, you know, entry-level positions, is there going to be some increase in revenue projections coming from that? And is that, has that been factored into this?
I don't think that we've been factoring in, are you talking salary savings? That we would be getting from those positions? I don't think at that time, we've been factoring that in. I would imagine it's probably small relative to the overall gap that we're expecting to see in, as we hit 2020.
I think what we anticipate doing, what we talked about when we adopted this budget in 2015, is, you know, looking out ahead, this gives us a signal that we've got to pay attention to this. So you'll see in the 2017, 2018 budget proposal next year, us begin to seriously address the, the projection, and as Jamie's pointed out, if in fact, it looks like in 2022, we can begin to recover some of this, then dealing with a four-year problem is not nearly as difficult as dealing with something that looks like an ongoing budget gap. So I think for now, we, it's out there, we wanted to, we've had this chart, as you know, for a number of years, to show this when we lose the sales tax subsidy. So it's just to remind us that's out there, we need to be careful as we look at these adjustments that we are recommending. We do so with an eye forward to the 2019 and 2020, and want to make sure that we're not doing anything that's going to further exacerbate that problem. At the same time, we do need to address some of these critical needs now, and so we'll be backed with the council in, as we propose the 2017, 2018 budget with some more of an action plan to address the 2019, 2020 issue.
Exactly. That was my, what I was really getting at, is that we need to be thinking about that, because we're just a couple of years away from 2019. We can't live off our fund balance.
Any other questions from council? Did we have any correspondence, Megan?
No, we did not.
Okay, and we don't have anybody signed up? Was there anybody who wanted to testify on this public hearing?
Will the public hearing be closed?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that we close the public hearing? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Good job, Jamie.
Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I ask the council, a couple of items. You have an administrative report before you, I want to just highlight a few things. Our city's Parks Division and our Department of Natural Resources are partnering in a joint project that will enhance the shoreline and habitat of Burt Island, that small island just off the southwest corner of June Kulan Park. We've had some erosion in that area over the years, both from natural elements and also from human impacts. So part of the project will remove a small portion of a boardwalk and extend a new boardwalk that will, we think, aid in people being able to view the island while not damaging some of the habitat there. We'll have some interpretive signing and some seating areas. Department of Natural Resources is leading this project, and we'll use conservation core crews to help remove some of the invasive plants from the area. So the project will begin, and the landwork of it will be finished in 2016. We have to wait a little while to do the in-water work, and that'll be done in the summer and fall of 2017. Wanted to let you know, and to let the public know, that a couple of our public works maintenance service workers, Kip Bratton and Rob Blackburn, will be competing in the state American Public Works Association rodeo competition. Council might recall, we've had some winners in the past. This tests people's skill in driving and backing up big rigs and doing some things that our crews really look forward to, and it's a sign of their confidence in what they do. So during, last year, as you, as you, we had Mr. Bratton place third out of 55 entries, so. We've got a number of street projects, again, for residents of the community, just watch those, be, you can see construction, please use caution. City's website has those listed, you can be aware of those. I wanted to point out one in particular, beginning next week and through next summer, Logan Avenue North, between North Sixth and Airport Way, will be closed to all southbound traffic. So we've got rerouting, but that's, as council knows, we've been looking forward to reconstructing that road. It's finally going to begin, and we're working closely with Boeing Company and other, the landing and other developments that'll be impacted by that, to try to find the best way to, to reconstruct this road for the minimum amount of impact. But there will be a change and an impact to folks using that area, and that's going to happen now through next summer. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Nobody signed up for audience comment? Howard, you came in late, did you want to?
No. Just coming here to tell you guys.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Moving on to consent agenda, we have four items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
CNN, I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one committee report to present.
This Community Services Committee report is, recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Law's appointment of Avni Mungra to the Parks Commission and the youth position for a term expiring June 1st, 2017.
Thank you. I move that council concur with the comment action of the Community Service Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have two resolutions this evening.
Okay, our first resolution is regarding the CA zone density regulations. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting a moratorium on accepting applications for residential development within the CA commercial arterial zone, except within the city center community area, and for previously-approved and valid land use applications, and establishing a termination date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council approves this resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the next resolution is regarding a street vacation public hearing. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, setting a public, setting a hearing date to vacate a portion of Wright Ave. in the vicinity of 300 Rainier Avenue North, VAC 15-003.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer?
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, second by Mr. Person, that council adopt this resolution as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Megan. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items. First, asking staff to add council president elections to our agenda for next week. Usually, these elections are the second week in November, we're going to have some absences, so we want to get it done earlier. So I move that we do that.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that council elections be moved to next week's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, and the other thing I have, next week's committee of the whole, 5:30 in council chambers, we have two items on the agenda. We have the mid-biennium budget and the lodging, hotel, motel tax update and general economic development update. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next Monday, November 2nd, at 5:00 PM, the Finance Committee will meet in the council conference room, three topics, vouchers, information technology division reorganization, and emerging issues in revenue sea, revenue streams. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Committee, normally scheduled for tomorrow, October 27th, is canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No new business.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee meeting, scheduled on November 2nd, will be canceled.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I guess we don't have anybody for audience comments, so what's the?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, will we adjourn? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?